Okay, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the City of Groton Committee of the Hall for Monday, March 10th, 2025. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Tally, Counselor Sheffield are present.
Okay, thank you. New business or referral, police department, resident parking only street list, Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you're aware, the parking ordinance is in place over the last two council meetings. And when I first brought you that ordinance and then the accompanying resolution, it was for the streets as well. Per your instructions, I added the existing streets to the new list, which deals with the residential parking in the communal area in question. So the new list is a combination of those. It requires a separate resolution because it's not part of the ordinance. If it were, then every time we added a street or took a street away, we'd have to come back and rewrite the ordinance. The ordinance says that you can set the streets by resolution, so that's what I'm here for tonight, to ask you to do that. I will tell you also that Public Works is in the process of purchasing the signage, which will designate the areas as residential with a permit required. And all commercial districts will be posted with a two-hour parking limit, as opposed to the variety of times that we have currently. So with that, I'll take any questions.
I'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just want to say, obviously, I've reviewed the list. I think it's a good list. It includes, I think, all the places that I've heard complaints about or seen myself driving by of clearly EV parkers taking up spaces in front of people's houses. But to your point that this is a resolution and we can change it, I just want to remind people, if A, your street, you think this is too much and cumbersome and no EV parkers are parking on your street, and why did we add it to this list? You can let us know that, or vice versa. If you are having parkers and your street is not on this list, please let us know, because we can change it. And it's a work in progress, so putting out this list and changing it may push people to park on additional streets that we may then have to deal with later. And that's not, obviously, out of the realm of possibility, so I just want to encourage people to give us feedback. Obviously, we're going to have the officers out paying attention as well, but we can't have eyes everywhere. So if people have some feedback, please feel free to give it to the police department or the mayor's office, or any of the counselors, if you want to mention or email or Facebook message us, however you want to communicate, because that's how we get a lot of information, is from the residents. And I know a lot of people are hesitant to complain, but let us know if you're having additional issues beyond this, because we're hoping to kind of make it a little better. And thank you for all the work on this.
No problem.
My only other question is, when, I know that we have a position for traffic enforcement officer, do we know when that position is going to be filled yet? I know it was in kind of limbo for a while.
Right, so we're short on personnel right now. That is an additional individual who would be assigned right now because of the field training officer, the field training that's going on with new officers. I have one in the academy as well, so that'll be two new officers that still need to complete the training, and then I have the two vacancies. So I'm meeting the patrol needs, as opposed to looking at putting somebody into a position which would actually pull from that. So I do have to wait for at least two of those officers to come on the road from their academy training or FTO that they're in now, before we look at that. But yes, there is absolutely a concrete plan to keep the traffic officer. That will be a community, and again, for the viewers and the community out there, that's going to be a community contact position in that if you have a traffic complaint, speeding complaint, parking complaint, et cetera, that individual will be available for direct contact, so they can go out and look at it for themselves. They can reach out to the resident or the resident, vice versa. They can go out to the residents, they can take a look at the problem that's being described, and then if there's some work to be done between the two of them working together, they can come up with a schedule where they may be there looking at traffic, looking at parking issues, looking at speeding, looking at stop signs, et cetera, so they get a better understanding of what's going on. But that will be very much at the forefront of community contact for us.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
Chief, when would you like to implement the signage of the two-hour limit?
Right, so it's a resolution, obviously, working today. Mayor and Council, you'll vote on it at the next one. Now, what I told Public Works is that we probably need at least 60 days. We will advertise after the resolution is passed, we will advertise on social media, and then pass that along for any link or anybody who wants to share that. We're going to put the street list on. We'll also include the fact that there's going to be a permit process. Individuals that would like a parking permit have to come in and fill that out for us. We have a smaller version of that now, some 200 permits that we issue. We envision that that's going to go up by about 1,800, so we'll look at about 2,000 permits then that we have to issue. So anywhere from 60 to 90 days is between myself and Public Works, that's what we're looking at as far as when this will actually go into effect. But we'll put that out as far as a date is concerned, and then if it looks like we can't meet that, then obviously, we can advertise the fact that, you know, we're going to extend it by another time period, that's where we can meet the requirements of both signage and people coming in to get that permit.
And the next thing would be following up with Deputy Mayor mentioned about traffic enforcement. Who would, for the time being, once the signage, let's say, comes up and you haven't hired somebody, would there be an officer, regular patrol, to kind of monitor cars that have been there, you know, kind of?
Yeah, so right now, everything comes in through dispatch, and we send the officers out as they, as time permits, in between calls, et cetera. I mean, we did write, even without the traffic officer, we wrote 2,000 parking tickets last year, so, you know, and that's the day-to-day patrol officers that are out there doing that, that kind of work. But yes, absolutely, any resident that has a parking issue, a speeding issue, stop signs, et cetera, can reach out to dispatch and the patrol will go out. But again, that is dependent on calls for service, because we also take somewhere around 12,000 calls, so it's, we can be a little busy sometimes.
Absolutely.
And the Chief and I also attend a bi-weekly meeting with Electric Boat and their Safety Office and others, and we have communicated this with them, and we will provide a list of the streets to them so that they can educate their employees. Any other, Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to know, is, what's the word out basically in the streets or in the neighborhoods as far as where the people who are actually parking these designated areas before to actually enforce? Any idea where they're going to, they're planning to park, or has something else been open, or there's?
No, I mean-
These are people who don't want to buy a parking space, and now they will?
Right. So there's paid lots, obviously, off of Thane Street, there's satellite lots that are in the town and across the river. I mean, I can tell you just by going through some of the satellite, or going by the satellite lots myself, they're not full. I think it's a matter of convenience that people, that the workers park in the streets, and, you know, that's no fault of their own, that's, they park in the first available spot, and they go to work. This is going to force more of a thought process when that occurs, as far as planning for them, because now they may be taking a commuter bus or parking further away than, you know, they're used to. But, you know, the opposite coin, the opposite side of that coin is, okay, this also frees up our residents, because they call all the time. It's got to be the number-one call that I receive as far as traffic is concerned. And, you know, hopefully, that it'll relieve some of that stress that the residents feel, because a lot of residents in that area don't have off-street parking, and they can't find a parking spot in front of their house. So, you know, they're up the road, so maybe that'll alleviate some of that.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting of March 17th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries.
Thanks, Chief.
Anything, Chief? Okay, Highway Department, GZA contract for Shore Avenue, Heidi?
Good evening, councilors, thank you. I'm here tonight to present a change order for services provided by GZA, Geo-Environmental, for construction administration and inspection services for the Shore Avenue Seawall project. One of the things that I wanted to do as part of this is just sort of explain why the need to bring this forward and extend the contract that we have with them. But I first wanted to just clarify a couple of things. I know that there's been some conversation in the community about the different contractors that are involved in this project. BL Companies, which has been, I think, you know, it's a name that some have heard, they were the design engineer for the construction documents when this project originally started, I believe, back in 2014. GZA, who we are currently under contract with for construction admin and inspection services, they are really our boots-on-the-ground folks right now. The city contracted with them just over a year ago, and they have been there doing the inspections, they've been providing engineering support services throughout the duration of this project. And then there's Arboreo Corporation. They are the construction contractor, they are the folks that are actually building the wall for. So I just wanted to kind of go through that. I know, again, there's been some conversation about, you know, the many different contractors that have been involved in this project. So I believe that you should have received a copy of the change order, and this change order or an extension of contract, it includes fees for additional design services that were somewhat above and beyond what we had originally contracted with GZA for, which I'll get into in just a moment, you know, as to why. But, you know, there were obstacles that we encountered as part of this project as it began to progress. So this changer that you see in front of you is, again, for design and support services, as well as a continuation of construction inspection services, and right now, those services are through the end of October 2025. So to talk a little bit about sort of why we need, or why we have this in front of us right now, our original contract with GZA was only for four months, and that was from the onset of construction, which was May of last year. As the construction project progressed, the supportive excavation uncovered a change in field conditions. There is a lack of bedrock at the elevations that were used to design the original wall. Because of the lack of bedrock, it necessitated a need to redesign the wall, you know, in terms of making sure it was something that still met all of the criteria, that it would be something that would last for many years to come. And the portion that we're talking about is about 150-foot section. And what that means is, we currently have five of 12 sections completely constructed. We're currently, as of today, constructing the sixth section, sixth of the 12 sections, and that portion will tie us into the peer structure. So the entire northern end of this project will be complete within the coming months. As we've, you know, continued to go through this process, we believe that we have a final design. We also are preparing construction documents, which will include, you know, new drawings for the contractor, as well as bid forms, and it will also provide us with a cost, a new cost and a new schedule for the project. So, you know, we are working through that now, we're hoping to have that package ready in the coming weeks, and as soon as that is available and we have new information, we'll bring that forward as well. Is there any questions?
Is there anything else you want to go in?
I don't believe so, sir.
Okay, I'll open the floor for discussion. Counselor Sheffield?
Heidi, is, now, we're looking at, what, the 13-months fee for this extension, and that stems from last?
Last, well, I'm sorry, it would have been the end of September.
End of September, and this will go through October?
Yes, sir.
For this specific dollar amount?
Yes.
Now, let's say, if it goes beyond that, will they'll be, we'll have to come back?
So what I did, and I do this with all of our projects, I mean, I guess the short answer certainly is yes, but we always build a contingency. So in the actual resolution, there is a 10% contingency that's added, and that is just in case there are some additional unknowns.
Hey, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you for coming to elaborate a little. I know that I had, in between the last meeting and this one, I did have some residents send me some questions. What was our original contingency amount on this project?
I apologize for not having the dollar amount in front of me. It was 15%.
It was 15%.
So I certainly don't want to say a number that may or may not be correct, but I believe it was about $500,000 to $600,000.
And do you know around, is that not right, Ron?
I don't recall.
Okay. Do you know around when we hit the mark at which we spent the contingency?
So we have not expended all of the contingency, but the way the contract is set up and the monies that we're working towards, we will expend that contingency, most likely before Section 12 is complete, or about the time Section 12 is complete.
Okay. And then, do you have, so is our expected end date the end of October, of this year? Currently, barring any other major changes, is now our current expected end date the earliest, the end of October?
I would say, I don't know that, and I can certainly have that information, probably within the next week or two. We're waiting for the contractor to provide us with an updated schedule and cost, and they build their schedule when they, you know, have all of the new construction documents. We are anticipating this construction season. We are talking to the contractor about ways to attempt to get this wall, the wall structure, built sooner rather than later, and as quickly as possible. So we're sort of still working some of those details out, but I would say this construction season and a regular construction season runs till about November 15th.
Okay. And then I have another question, really, for Finance Director. How do we expect this to impact taxes? Or do we not know that yet?
We don't know that at this point. We are still searching for different funding sources. So at this point, we don't really know what the effect is going to be and how it's going to be funded. We are still looking at those options that we do have.
But from my, from previous discussions that we've all had, this is a project because it's infrastructure and roads, that there are more than one way to fund this project, so it's not like we're going to have to pull it all out of the general fund because that's the only option, right?
Let me add to this. So before the legislative season started, we brought the legislators here to talk to us, and I did not know an exact amount. I'm still, we're still working to get a final quote, but I asked, I sent an email to Senator Summers and Representative Bumgarner to see if they could put, ask for money. There's a bill that's in, it's asked for $9.7 million is what the bill asked for. That was based on the initial rough, rough, rough estimate that we had. We're still waiting on a finalized estimate. We do not know how much money that's going to be yet. I am hopeful that we will get something from the state. In addition to that, I've had some initial discussions, but no specific amounts, no specific amount involved with John Burt, because the town, I'll be asking the town to provide some of the funding as well, and then we are looking internally on how we would provide funding. So that's the answer. I know it's not the answer everybody wants, because they want something they can touch, but one, we need the final number, and then two, we need to figure out how we're going to get there from here. So that's the truth.
And then I just have one more question. It's okay. And I just want to point out, in case people didn't notice the dates, that GZA has been working unpaid on this project, which is why we're doing this special meeting tonight. And we have, obviously, a good relationship with them, and they're helping us manage the change that we weren't expecting. So we, I really appreciate that, because we obviously weren't planning on it, and, you know, we want to get them paid as soon as possible. Thank you for all your work on this.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
Has municipal bond has been considered at all for this possibility?
At this point, we haven't. I mean, it is an option. Like I said, as like the mayor pointed out, the biggest one right now is with the state and kind of what comes out of there. We are, like you said, looking internally at other things, but bonding could be an option if, you know, depending on how everything falls out. So I don't want to say it's off the table, but yeah, we're looking at all options right now.
Yeah, I mean, especially if it goes beyond the specific dollar amount, having a bond that kind of covers, just in case expenditures go beyond what's been planned, so something to consider.
We are, we're considering all options.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Early in the process, when we saw this, I reached out to Representative Courtney, and this is before the swearing-in and the new administration came in, and he said there was probably going to be some evaluation of grants, and they would probably be hard to get, and that's what we're seeing now, so we will not be, we will not have any help from the federal side of this. So we are looking at all options. Any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion to move this to the special Mayor and Council meeting of 10 March, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and that's it. Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you, Heidi.
Okay, Finance Department, annual COLA pension, Ron? Thank you.
So what I hand out, there's two sheets. One of, just the top one is for what we're currently talking about, the next one will be for the donation request at the end. So every year, the Retirement Board reviews a cost-of-living adjustment for retirees. This should be for retirees prior to 2022. It's based on a formula that is 33% of the COLA change, and so for this year, the actual CPI change was 2.86% from '23 to '24. The 33% of that came up to a 0.95% COLA adjustment. So the board did recommend to do a 0.95% COLA adjustment for retirees prior to 2022. The sheet that I handed out is from the actuary, it's the cost estimate on what that would do to our actually determined contribution. But we just want to relay to the council that this COLA is already built into our assumption, so it doesn't increase our ADC, because there's already an assumption built in for a COLA. So, and this was recommended and passed by the board on their March 6 special meeting.
Correct.
And then just as a history, because I have feelings it's going to be a question, the COLAs for the last four years in 2024 was 1.27%, '23 was 2.12%, '22 was 1.31%, and 2021 was a 0.3%. So just a little bit of a history on the COLAs in the past.
And can you give us a rough estimate on our funding of our pension? Percentage-wise?
It's in the high 90s.
Okay. So as to the council and to the residents out there, we are well-funded as far as the pension goes.
And that does fluctuate based on the market as well, so.
Right, absolutely. Okay, questions or comments? I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting of March 17th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries. Okay, thank you, Ron. Parks and Recreation, basketball court donations?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As some of you may be aware, we've been working with the Connecticut Sun since about this time last year, and part of the memorandum of understanding that we had with them is they were going to do some financial donations to us. We have received the $45,000 check from the team operations budget and the $15,000 check from their nonprofit Connecticut Sun Foundation for maintenance of the basketball courts that are being constructed at Washington Park. So I'm coming to you all today to see if we can accept that donation, so I can get the checks deposited and out of the safe.
Okay, I'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just wanted to say, I know this project is taking, I think, longer than everyone expected, but I'm really excited to get the basketball courts up and running, and I'm glad we were able to get some financing for the upkeep, because I think, you know, going forward, we want to obviously keep them in good condition, and I know a lot of people are looking forward to using them. So thank you for all your work on this project, because I think it's going to be a really good addition to the park. Thank you.
Hey, Counselor Sheffield?
So with this money now, we don't have to utilize it now, because it's not constructed yet, completed, so it's after completion, we'll be able to use that?
Update, upkeep and maintenance, and we do have another couple more years of donation coming.
That's right, yes, yes, it's three, is it three years? Okay, that's what I thought.
So we have another 25, and then another 25.
Okay.
So, and hopefully, after that, the conversation was, it wouldn't just stop, it would, with the individuals that we were dealing with initially, it was going to continue on, but we have to reconnect with the Connecticut Sun, because their personnel has changed.
Now, when do you anticipate the restart of the court to be?
I have, it's funny, I reached out to the contractors for both the tennis courts and the basketball courts today, and I am waiting back to hear from them. So with the nicer weather this week, maybe that will help get things rolling again.
Hey, Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. My question was basically what Counselor Sheffield was saying, it was like about when would it be finished, because if it's not finished prior to concerts in the park, I mean, how would that, it would?
Oh, it's going to be finished before that.
It will be finished, okay, all right. It'd be a nice Florida dancer.
Any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting of March 17th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Children First donation request, Ron?
So this was a donation request from Children's First. For the, the resolution has for 1,000, what I did print out for you was the historical donations that we've done. You can see that they have been one that has been a regular donation. And then you'll see for 2025, currently, we've done the subvets for 1,000 and premium ballers for the 800, so there is $3,200 left for this year's donations. So there is $3,200 left for this year's donations.
Any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Debo?
I just want to say, I know we've given to them every year. Do you know if the utility gives money to them?
I don't, I don't believe so. We usually try to double-check to make sure that both sides are not giving, to make sure that this is just one-time fund or one-sided funding, that they're not getting out of both. But I will make sure that Jackie does double-check that during the week, but historically, I do not believe they have.
I know they try to coordinate with other local children's entities to do programming and things. And I do, they provide all their services free, and I think it's a good addition. They kind of do a good job of networking with the other childcarers and libraries and all those things. So I'm happy to continue with this donation.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of March 17th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. All right, so we are going to go straight into the mayor and council. So welcome to the special mayor and council meeting for Monday, March 10th, 2025. Roll call, city clerk?
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Debo, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Tally, Counselor Sheffield and Counselor Norris.
Okay, and new business, Counselor Patterson?
I don't have any.
Okay, Counselor Piazza?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Oh, no, no, no. This is new business? So I need somebody to read the resolution. Do you?
Oh, do you want?
Do you, does some?
Counselor Patterson?
Do you have it?
Yeah, you have it, right?
Do you have it up?
Yeah, he does. Oh, you have the, go into your other thing, I think you have the cow. Go back. It's on the other, it's in the email, but the other attachment. Here, she's mine.
Or you can read it. I just want somebody to read it.
Okay, you want me to read it? Okay, I'll read it. Okay, resolution R-25-03-20. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council accept an extension of contract with GZA Geo-Environmental, Incorporated, 35 Nutmeg Drive, Suite 325, Trumbull, Connecticut, for Construction Administration Construction Inspection Services of the Shore Avenue Seawall Reconstruction Project at a cost not to exceed $772,169.58, inclusive of a 10% contingency to be paid from capital funds, I so move. Second.
We have a motion and a second, this was just discussed. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you, council, for coming out. Thank you, Heidi, thank you, Ron.